Hello, welcome everybody to the City of Shelton Commission Meeting. We are going to play something before the first item just because we're going to give the first item about just a few more minutes here. And so what we'll do is we'll just jump right into our weekly Commission Reports and then we will move into the Commission Report involving the Historical Society. So Commissioner Moore, did you have something on your...
Oh, yes, I do, I do. First of all, I would like to say that I did do some local shopping for Small Business Saturday and there weren't a lot of people out and about. I hope that this weekend things will pick up a lot. We all need to support our local small businesses to keep our community vibrant and active. And plus, there is a lot of good shopping to be found locally. Today, earlier, I attended Leslie Ann's Retirement Potluck and we sang "Happy Birthday", and this is the party that keeps going, I think, for her last day. Tomorrow, I'm planning to attend a Kiwanis meeting. On Wednesday, I have Oakland Bay Clean Water Advisory Committee meeting. On Thursday, I will be meeting with Steve and with Mary Thompson, Spencer Howard, and some other folks from Artifacts who are doing a study on the Roundhouse, a feasibility study on the Roundhouse, so I'm excited to be meeting with them. Also, on Thursday, there is a ribbon cutting at El Cerrape Cantina, which I'm very pleased to be attending. On Friday, I have the Local Infrastructure Prioritization meeting. And Friday evening, I will be attending Uncorked for a Cause for Sound to Learning. On Saturday, I will be attending Association of Washington Cities course titled Elected Officials Essentials. We'll be writing in the parade on Saturday night. And just a reminder that this Friday and Saturday is a local festival, Holiday Magic. Come downtown, celebrate, spend your money, meet your neighbors, and support our community. And that's it for this week.
Well, Mike, Ms. Olson.
Tomorrow, I have a left board, that's the Law Enforcement Fair Fighters Disability Board. Wednesday, a Mason Transit Board meeting. Thursday, I'll be at the ribbon cutting for El Cerrape. And Friday, Saturday, I'll be downtown in the parade on Saturday night. Try and stay dry. That's it for me.
Well, this is almost a repeat of what they've said because we're, a lot of these things run together. But tomorrow, I'm going to a mayor's, it's a mayor's roundtable kind of situation that the president of the, actually, the CEO of the Association of Washington Cities called some mayors to come to be part of a study session in Shoreline concerning homelessness and also affordable housing issues. And so I've talking to Marilyn a little bit about what her committee has done, and she gave me a few ideas. And I'm going to go and just find out what other cities are doing to handle these questions and these problems that we're facing with some of these issues. So anyway, I'm planning to get up at 5:00 in the morning. And I got to go to Olympia, and we're going to go real early, and we're going to drive up there. And so I'm looking forward to seeing if I can't bring back some valuable information that the City of Shelton can use. Wednesday, an Economic Development Council Subregulatory Subcommittee meeting. On Thursday, I will be doing that ribbon cutting, also at El Cerrape. And Friday, I'll be attending that Infrastructure EDC meeting with the county and other entities, talking about priorities for infrastructure. Saturday, I'll be attending another AWC, kind of introductory conference with Dave O'Leary over Olympia, and then the parade is Saturday night. And of course, is this, this is the Friday night. This is, man, this is a big sales day downtown. I'll be also actively involved with my personal business with the magical Friday event, Friday...
Holiday Event.
Holiday Magic event that we've been doing for, I don't know, about 14, 15, 14 years kind of like. And we do appreciate Mr. Cooper's and his wife's support and help, and they've really done a lot of the footwork to making this thing go and be a successful event. So that will be the, actually, the little light in the fires in the street is Friday night. That's the big night. And so, anyway, if this goes out to the media, please, media plug this event. Did you have anything else to say about that event? You know, just...
Oh, actually, I was going to mention that during a general public comment.
Right. We'll catch you then. Let's get under the proper heading of that. So that completes all of our weekly Commission Reports. And now, I believe we were going to hear from Annette McGee or a person that is her director, I believe, about their report, the third quarter report. Annette, what do you think?
Well, I don't see her anymore except at 2:00. I do know that she hasn't ready, and she said she would be here, but something may have come.
Why don't we, I mean, what is the Robert Rule of Orders? Can we place this further down the agenda?
Why don't we wait about five minutes if we can?
Okay, well, let's move it on down the agenda a little bit.
I read the report, so I can kind of go over it.
No problem. We'll move it down the agenda a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now is that general public comment period that anybody can speak, and if we have a list of some people, Kathy, if you can hand that to me, we'll do that, general public comment. Thank you. And the first is, Marilyn, you're first on the list. Did you want to speak about something specific?
I prefer to speak later, though, thank you.
Let's do that. Okay, and now we have, let's see here, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, can you make out that name there?
That looks like must be, is it Mary...
MJ.
MJ. Come on up and speak to us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I am Mary Jean Prabachek, and I live at 60 West Shelton Valley Drive, which is a stone's throw from the city line, and probably will be in the city at some point. I just wanted to say that I've been a little late getting here, because, and I've never had a better experience sitting in traffic waiting for a road to open because they're working a week full of art. It's going to be a challenge. My husband said, "Well, just go down the other way to Shelton Valley Road." Well, he didn't tell me it was a 10-mile detour. I'm willing to sit for five minutes, I guess he's not. But I did want to tell the commission, or the City Commission, how much those of us who are out there, even though it's going to be a painful few months of waiting, I am totally for it. And I can't thank you all enough for finally making it happen. We've lived out there for 21 years, and I've gone through suspensions in tires and lots of other things on cars, so it's, and having a sidewalk that I can walk on, it's going to be like being in a real town, and I can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad. You know this was the best block out. We're still working out this podium position here. I just wanted to step up and say, I'm really glad to hear all the commissioners are attending the events this weekend. I'd like to encourage everybody, they're predicting rain. Even if it rains, don't let that stop you. Get an umbrella, come on out, it's a lot of fun. Gary, thank you so much for giving us some props on that. However, I have very little to do with Holiday Magic. That's mostly the downtown merchants and the Christmas Town Kiwanis.
Your wife does a lot.
My wife does.
I hear a lot.
Does the majority of that. So I don't want to take any of her thunder on that one. She does really good with everything. So on Friday, there's going to be the Block Party on Railroad Avenue, which has the Downtown Merchants Game Card. One thing that people miss out on quite a bit is the Shelton Cinemas is having a free viewing of Arthur Christmas at 4:00 p.m. And it's a food donation, so if you want to kick that off as a little holiday movie, come on down and check that out. Then there's going to be choir singing, the Christmas tree lighting, art walk, and marshmallow roasting over the fires. And then Saturday, the game card goes all day long. There's also the Mistletoe Mile Run at 4:00, followed by the Grand Christmas Town Kiwanis Christmas Parade on Railroad Avenue. So I encourage you all to come down and enjoy that. Also, one thing I wanted to say today, too, is I wanted to give a heartfelt appreciation to Leslie Ann. I've been attending Commission meetings for quite a while, and she's always been the one that I can get a big hug from. So if I could, could I give you one last big hug?
Oh, man.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's it. Thank you much.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda would be our Consent Agenda. Are we ready for a reading of the Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Leslie Ann? For the last time, would you please give us a reading of the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda, vouchers numbered 10266 through 10271 in the amount of $139,445.42. City of Shelton Historic Preservation Reappointment of Ms. Tristan Starr for a three-year term ending 2018. Just here in the audience. Park Facility Naming Policy, Resolution Number 1087-1115, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, adding a new section to the City of Shelton Cross Connection Control Policy. City of Shelton and Mason County Historical Society release...
All right, is there a motion approved of the Consent Agenda?
Still no.
A second, that was it.
There's a motion and a second approved of the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Agenda passes. All right, next is an item under Old Business, and this, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to our City Administrator, Dave O'Leary, and he has something he wanted to say about this, I think.
Yes, during the budget process, we prioritized our budget proposals. The SPAT has made a request that we made a commitment to the portpotties that are placed around town now. There are, they have put up three, one of them is recently moved. When this was originally considered, it was fairly high on the priority list, I don't remember the exact number right now, but it's fine. Some of the recent discussion has been whether there might be a potential for cost sharing on this. The budget is upside down. Nothing else that is on the priority list has been funded at this point. On the other hand, they did make a pretty good case last year that the, that it was working, was effective, and that we're seeing less human waste in the alleys in the downtown area. So anyway, I think what we're mainly waiting to do is hear what you all have to say about it, and whether or not you'd want to give us advance notice that you want in the budget so we can include it. And I think the program is going to continue with city funding. We ought to make the decision fairly soon, even though you don't have to make the final decision until the budget's made, within, probably next week or so.
All right. I have my ideas, and I'm sure Commissioner Moore and Olson have their ideas, and so any one of us can start out and say what we want to say, I guess.
I believe that this is an essential service we need to provide for our citizens, whether they're homeless or occasional guests going through town. It was identified in our reasoning process, we assigned a task force to look into this, and they did their job, and they've come back with great results. I just feel it's an essential service, it needs to be done. And if we don't do it through the budget, I proposed something last week that I'll propose again, and that's that the commissioners consider relinquishing some of their health benefits to support this. There's a $10,000 offer on the table that can be easily done. So I'll stop right there, and let the other commissioners jump in, and I can explain it more if you agree.
Go ahead.
Well, I talked to Marilyn off the record here the other day, and I says, you know, we're all trying to make things work and work together on this. I proposed that we found some money, okay, that we, actually, what we do is, instead of having the three portpotties, we reduce it to two, because the one we're having a slight of an issue with beyond the library, and that the city would actually fund six months. We have around $1,500 to $1,800 that the city would, I think, or 3,000, well, $1,500 each, yeah, yeah. So it'd probably be around $3,000, $3,200 or something, that the city, oh, I see, we fund six months, which is actually only $1,500, $1,600, $1,700.
Would be about $25, probably.
Well, for six months, but we're all, we're cutting it back to two?
Maybe $2,000.
To two portpotties?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we had a total, I thought we had $4,500 for three, or...
He's given you a budget of $5,000 for the three.
Five for the three, okay. So that's basically $1,800 apiece, or $1,850 or something. So looking at $3,600 for the year for two, half of that is $1,800, or thereabout, because it's not $5,000, we're eliminating one.
Somebody will have to do the math.
Basically, I'm, my proposal, the city picks up the slack, and then we thank the group for doing what they've done, and that we fund it for the first six months, but at that point, and I've even offered to put some money into, Marilyn and I together, we'll put some money into a fund to start raising money for the last six months of this. Okay? It's for that, trying to raise some money that way. It's a compromise from three to two, it's a compromise on only half the money, but that's what I feel, you know, rather than say no or yes on all of it with money we don't have, I think we could probably pay for six months for two, and if it continues at that point, it would have to be money that's raised for this year. Following years, there might be a lot more in the budget to deal with this more effectively, maybe even some actually stick build type of situations. But at the moment, that's my idea. It would be two portpotties, we only pay for the first six months from the city.
I guess I want to acknowledge Commissioner Olson's idea about this. I can appreciate the thinking outside the box, I'm not really sure how that would work. And I would say definitely, I would rather personally come up with a different, a different solution. However, if our budget crises continues on into future years, we definitely may have to look at a solution stemming from that direction. So the proposal that Gary is giving makes some sense, but there, it does involve the unknown, as far as we don't know for sure that we would be able to raise those additional funds. So I'm not sure what we would benefit, I guess it would go through six months.
Six months, that is enough.
I'm not really into that. I think that we need to fund the whole thing for a year. We didn't, we didn't assign this to them to be fundraisers. You know, if the businesses or other entities aren't going to support it upfront, then the city needs to do it. And I'm disappointed that neither commissioner will agree to look at health coverage as a way to do this, that we're totally funded and not put the burden on the sewer utility or the community development utility. So I again, offer my proposal, and I want to fund it for the full year before the budget cycle ends.
I guess to answer that, Mike, you know, let's just get real with this, okay? You've been a commissioner for four years, and I didn't hear this, cut the commissioners' health insurance until about...
During the campaign.
Yeah, during the campaign, that was a great, because, and if you lose, then what do you lose? You don't lose your health insurance, do you?
I'm a senior for public service, so if you're not, then take your benefits and go on.
Yeah. I think that this community wants to pay their commissioners salary. I think this commission, the city wants to enable the commissioners to have health benefits like every other employee in the city. And as far as, what I have personally given back to the city, to the tune of $10,000 over the past four years, did you match that? I'm just saying, it's great when you're on your way out the door, when you come up with "cut my salary," but you're gone. So, you know, I don't think that this commission is getting overpaid. Health benefits are part of anything that the city does, and I personally give, I can give you 400 meetings in four, in four years that I attended without any money. So I'm working part-time or full-time. You know, we have, you know, it took you, you know, weeks to figure out we can afford a $9 million water system, and then you want, you want to come against the health benefits of the commission. So to me, I don't, I don't think, I think there's lots of other things.
I think we're off topic here, I just made a proposal.
Yeah, well, I'm, it's not off topic here, because you brought this up, and you said you were amazed that we didn't respond to this. Well, I'm responding, and I personally think that if you're the mayor or a commissioner in this city, and you get a salary, and you get the same benefits that everybody else gets, that I don't think that's the first place you look at taking money from. So that's just my personal opinion. I don't think we're overpaid, I think we're not underpaid, and I know that from my point, I put double the amount that's required of me in meetings and contributions back to the city. So that's, I think that's the wrong place to look for money, but if Commissioner Moore wants to cut her health benefits, that's fine. Question from the public?
May I speak as a member of the committee?
Sure.
As a point of clarification, yes, we talked about a compromise. I took that suggestion to the committee. We discussed it at length, but did not come to an agreement that that was the ideal solution. We would intend to keep the three units, and if I misspeak, interrupt, through the end of our pilot, because we have the money for that. Certainly, it would be preferable to have a commitment for funding for the entire year. Part of the hope was that by six months into the new year, the revenue will look different, and you can somehow find the additional money, because I think the committee agrees with Mike, if I can speak for them, that this is an essential public service, but we're also sympathetic with the budget. But I wanted to clarify that, yes, you and I had spoken personally, but the committee did not take a position supporting the compromise.
And to answer that, just, did the committee figure out the proper placement then of the third portpotty? Because that was a question that's been up in the air. Yes?
Just for the sake of those who are here, being nobody I am currently the chair of the committee, we've had quite a discussion of this. I point out that we renamed ourselves Shelton Poverty Advisory Team. It acknowledged that we were given an assignment, we completed it, pending written report. We've given our advice to the city, and there should be no mistake that if the portpotties aren't to be funded, it's a city responsibility. Second thing I have to say, though, is a comment on the budget process. I'm a lifelong budget worker, so I'm not a dilettante at this. But it bothers my mind that this thing, because it was not in last year's budget, apparently has to claw its way onto a budget. It was prioritized as an add-on and never given proper status, as best I can understand it. I would challenge that public sanitation certainly outranks something that's in that budget. But I want to reiterate that as far as the SPAT is concerned, we've done our job for handing a recommendation to the city, and what you do is your choice.
Thank you. That's Toby Kevin for the records. Well, I gave, I think Commissioner Olson gave you a suggestion, I gave a suggestion, and I think Tracy is thinking about some options here. I know that we're $300,000 out of our reserves to keep the city floating this year. I know that. And so, you know, that's where we are, you know, and I've offered to voluntarily put some money into this. I mean, step up to the plate, let's all throw the money in, you know. We just don't have it in the city budget unless we choose to borrow more money or whatever. So I know when we did this, and we did the trial basis, there was never a guarantee that the city was going to fund this. I mean, there was never a written guarantee that we were going to. We do trial basis, we do this, and so I've given a compromise position, which basically gives you, well, two, but if you want the third one, I still don't have it in where the third one's going to be. That was my question. Do we have a location? We do. We think it will probably clear it up by the library, because there's a lot of homeless people that gather at the library, and that would be one more bathroom facility. And we also have to think about, we know that $5,000, when you think about, that's a lot of money. But if somebody's using the alley, that stuff is going right out here into the bay. What's our bay worth? Makes work for heck long more than $5,000. Well, it looks like it's, Commissioner Moore is the place where, I mean, you know, she needs to probably figure out what she thinks we need to do, too, because...
I don't know if this is appropriate, but we have several fans being raised, I don't know, does somebody...
Yeah, well, we opened up the can of worms, though we did, but this is the committee, and we're talking about the committee. I think it was appropriate to avoid the rules of engagement for that.
So then general public...
The general public can come in on this, and I guess now would be the better time than anything. But let's do it in a proper way. Sign in, and we give you up to three minutes to speak about this.
Okay, and then I will formulate my thoughts during, during this. I have no suggestions.
Any questions?
That's fine. And anybody else would like to speak on this, they are all welcome to. Why don't you go ahead and start this?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tristan Starr, my 509th and 507th District. I don't have anything prepared, and for those that know me, I do better when I do. But I have four points I would like to make. The first point being, in six months, it's going to be summer. People come out in the summer, and we're not sure what number we will have coming to our streets, I'm not sure of the task, or the, this group's statistics on the count that we've done last winter. But the summer is when people are going to be coming out. And my second point is Sociology 101 talks about communities and cities that are a good place to invest, and cities that do reach out to those in need and help each other are deemed in Sociology 101 as the best place to invest. So I think in our city, that we continue to find a way to fund the outdoor usages that are needed by not only our people that live outside, but others that may be walking around town. My third point is that, and I think it's already been addressed, that we have a portpotty up near Shelton Creek, or, you know, our new walking trail, because that was one of the first points made on the social problem of, you know, waste being in public. And that said, going back to the last Commission meeting, Commissioner Tracy acknowledged that two of them are in the historic districts at Brewer Park, and even moving it to the library would be in the way in the area. And I feel that we have such a good community that rallying gardeners and contributors and maybe, you know, hardware stores and plant stores, that maybe we could put some very attractive planters out there, or other art that would deter from the, I don't want to typecast this or stigmatize it, but, you know, in the design of the toilet, which is a fact pleasing to the eye in general. And my fourth point is that it's very important to our business and to our, and to our tourist visitors, that when they come to our city, that they see a city that I fell in love with, that is so clean and organized and wonderful. And I think that, you know, even having portpotty, potties in public view shows that we care. And I think that's an important image to continue to represent. But thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kathy McGowan?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Did we receive some large amount from the state to go towards our economic development of our city when Simpson closed their doors? Are we paying a large amount to a consultant to figure out how to spend these dollars? Let's take some of this money, it is economic development, to have bathroom facilities around the city for people, visitors and residents. So if we could take some of that money and put towards some portpotties that are very important to the city. Thank you.
All right, any other? Mr. Cooper?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Forrest Cooper for 907 Railroad. I just want to say, first off, thank... say, first off, thank you so much for, for allowing some public comment during an issue like this. I think that's a really good thing to do whenever you are kind of in a bind, when you're looking for ideas. Open up the idea pool to the community and let's see what comes out of it. Something that I would suggest as an idea would be to possibly look at the budget that's set aside for abatement and see if there's some way to utilize some of that for the funding of this process, or possibly suspend some of the abatement stuff for a year. The abatement program's been fantastic. Steve's done a great job with it. But that also, part of the abatement strategy was to get rid of these areas that are being occupied by homeless. So this actually goes right along with that by creating bathroom facilities.
That's fine. I don't think we have any money for abatement. I'm not sure.
Didn't you take it out of the budget this year? Because there was $48,000 originally left out.
We'll have leftover dollars from 2015 going into 2016. Not sure exactly how much is there, but it's enough to continue the program.
Okay. And then one more piece of actual data for you guys to think about with this bathroom situation. And I would highly respectfully ask that the papers and the media, please don't report this, because it's tough for me to actually say, because it could be detrimental to businesses. We have a block downtown currently that behind it is being used as a public restroom area on a regular basis, because it has a nice hole in between two buildings. Okay? And you can walk by there and actually smell the human waste. And what it has led to is it's actually led to a real heavy rodent problem that's taken place on this particular block. There's several blocks that are having it. There are upwards of 20, 30 rats being caught in businesses downtown on a regular basis. So I want you guys to keep in mind that these also help with rodent control and with pest control. So keeping the feces and the urine off the streets helps keep the rat population down. So, and I think the papers understand why I respectfully ask that, you know, keep that to the minimum. Because we want people to know that the business owners are doing everything they can to keep their buildings clean and safe.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak upon the public concerning this issue? So there was a couple of possible funding sources. Was the abatement program, whether was the fact that we have money to deposit from the state. I believe you're talking about the $500,000 that's shared between the county and Economic Development Council and the city. Most of that money has kind of already been in our budget and dedicated. So I guess we can, we can make it work. But at some point, the reason we're close to $60 million in debt is because not on this issue, but on all issues, is we just outspend the money that we bring in. And so the way I have tried to help myself is personally putting money into some of this stuff. But obviously, I don't have an extra half a million. So I don't have an extra five today. So you've heard all the public comments. Mike, I saw lots of fully funded. I was offering to probably half fund it for six months. And maybe you have a plan that would fill in, avoid all the rest.
Well, I wish that I had the perfect answer. I think my, my first choice, of course, is what we would all like this work to be fully funded. The difficulty, as we all know, and why we are throwing out these ideas is we don't know where this, this money is going to come from. And it's extremely frustrating that it is not a lot of money. It's in comparison to our many projects that we do. It is not a lot of money for this. I believe wholeheartedly that it is a human dignity issue besides all the health problems that are caused. I wasn't aware there were problems with rodents, but that makes sense. And that's disgusting. And I'm, I'm interested in the abatement budget idea. I would need to talk with staff about that to find out even if that money can be transferred. I am not totally sure that we can take money out of one pot and throw it in another pot that easily. I, once again, I will say I appreciate Commissioner Olson's idea that is sacrificed. My major issue and my major hesitation with that is that I know how difficult it was for the city to attract people to run for commission before there was health benefits and there was something for that. I don't have any answers. And I don't know that we're at a stage right now to come up with the answers or a solution.
Takes two. All it takes is two. You know, I mean, we can fully fund it and then, you know, just find the money and plug up the hole and everyone moves on down their happy way, I guess. I think we're all for it. I mean, nobody's here saying we're against anything, but I guess it's all a matter of fight for dollars. So I guess I would make a motion that the city, the only problem with it is, is on the location of the third port of potty. We have an issue where it is now. We want to move it. Where we move it, we need a consensus with the neighbors or the library if this is okay.
We're working, we're working on that.
That's where we are with it. But I think I would put a motion that we fully fund it for one year and that we find the money to do. Okay? So there, I mean, that's the best motion I can give you and the best answer I can give you up to today. And we just have to figure out whether we can get that out of the abatement money. It sounds like it's a possibility. Abatement programs are the best programs you've got, folks. You know, I mean, we're taking houses and, you know, if we could sell some of that property, then we put it back into it as a self-funding program. So I hate touching that money, but it sounds like from the committee at large, people want to, want to promote this and continue to do this. So I would make a motion, we fully fund it for one year. And then if we can't take it out of the abatement money, then we find some other place to take it out.
Okay. I have one question about that before.
Sure, absolutely.
So are you thinking two port of potties? Are you thinking three port of potties that we're going to?
They want three and they're going to put the other one where the people aren't going to object to it. And that's our.
So that's, that's not.
It's three. They want three, we give them three. And we, you know, I mean, it sounds like the public wants this too. I mean, we had public comment and both, both comments from them and three comments from them, it sounds like it's a step in the right direction.
I have one more question for Steve. Sorry to put you on the spot here, Steve. I know that we have some abatement issues that we've been working on. And we were kind of working at the top end of the abatement monies. If we were to take this money out of the abatement fund, would that leave us enough money to remove the dangerous number one building that we've been trying to get rid of?
I don't know. There will be some monies in this year's budget that will go unspent in the abatement program. My understanding is there's not abatement money in 2016 budget. Whatever money is in this current budget would be simply carried over for whatever CD programs we would, I guess, prioritize from that. It's likely that CD will have enough funding to fund this for a year. It's also means that it's less likely we would have the funding to complete what are really the two priority abate of projects left on the top 10 list. The old bowling alley structure on First Street and the brick building in Second Grove. Those are very expensive demolitions. We've been looking for ways to reduce the cost of those. And that's primarily why they're still standing. They're probably fairly expensive endeavors, no matter how we approach it. And it's been difficult to find the money and the resources to do that. One of the elements we've been trying to accomplish with the bowling alley ability is to salvage all of the wood that we can and finding the right person to do that. But to be candid, it's unlikely we'd have enough funding to tackle either of those projects.
So what we have to keep in mind as we, if we go ahead and remove some of our abatement money, is that we're left with a potential liability of those two buildings if something happens.
What staff would likely recommend is if we were to continue with any demolitions, it would be something simple and less costly. Again, because of the cost, we probably can't tackle those structures at this time.
Pastor David Leary, is there, where would be another source of $5,000? Is there anything else that comes to your mind on the add-on? It'd be hard to take it out of the fund that Kathy McDowell talked about, the consultant, because we've already gone through the process of making.
We've already got a grant, we've got a grant, we've already approved.
All approved, right. It's not easy to just take that money.
There was a set of projects that we said, this is what we want to do. The state has approved it. And if we try to do something different, then.
You gotta rewrite that.
Then the, then the grant, it violates the grant term. So I won't say it's possible, but it's unlikely.
This is a sanitation, a public works issue? I mean, I don't know.
Maybe, you know, maybe you can do it a, you might consider it a schoolery issue. We haven't really talked about it and it's efficient depth. We do put out garbage cans around town, collect trash. Why can't we put out houses to collect the other stuff? But I don't know. We have, that's, you're looking at a person who's who we're going to consult with. And she's, when you try to do something like that, she starts talking about archers. I understand.
Well, I think we have to, we've spent a lot, not wasted any time, but spent a lot of time on this. I think we're sympathetic. I think we might be able to make this happen. Okay? But I think what we do is put this under old business and come back next week or.
You made a motion.
Well, I did.
It was seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay. Boy. But I said, that's only if we can find the money. It's not a problem finding the money. But I did make a motion.
You didn't.
Because I was wanting to push this meeting a little farther down the road. Okay. Well, I seconded, so.
Please refresh my memory with the actual.
The actual motion's whether we're going to fund it for one year. And we're going to try to find the $5,000 to do it. And one source is ugly abatement money. And then we went into how much money is there? Are we going to have that? So, but I don't think that's the only source. I think there might be some other, other sources or other things, whether it's public works or sanitation or whatever. But we can't make those decisions until we confer with maybe our attorney, maybe with our, you know, the audited questions, all these things. So I made a motion hoping that the abatement money was going to be the sole answer. But I'll stick with my motion. I mean, you know, if that, Commissioner Olson seconded, so that's.
Point of clarification, are you saying we're going to try or we are?
Well, the motion is we do it. So we have to find the money. So.
Well, I could say that with mitigate, I just bought 100 port of potty buttons.
Buttons?
They're yours. We're not going to need them.
We can sell them.
They're kind of like.
Well, you give them to me and then I'll sell them and I'll put the money in the fund. You know, see, the other option is that this group, we can raise some money. Okay? We could put some little things in and we can, we can possibly help on that a little bit. But I, I guess there's no answer, but I need to talk to the administrator, like I did, and talk to the, you know, our wonderful Kathy Virely and say, what can we do? And go back to the drawing board. I mean, I think it's something that the community wants. You did your part. The community has spoken. Anybody that's got a concern has said they would like it to happen. So I made the motion, Commissioner Olson seconded. So any further discussion? We will find the money. Okay? Any further discussion?
You gonna vote for it?
I'm gonna vote for it. $5,000.
You can go down your motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. It's not democracy, Ellen, so you're going to make it happen. Okay. So forget the old business thing. We're going to make it happen. That was the first and second and final reading. All right. Next is Mark. Mark's going to talk to us a little bit about parks.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Excuse me one second. Did your lady pass?
No, she didn't. I'll say, oh, I did.
Okay. Would you like to do that now, so you can?
I would do it.
Okay, Mark, we'll put you on hold a second. Sorry. Okay, we're going to have a, a third quarter report. I'm going to ask Annette McGee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, it's been a while since we've been here to watch the Montrose work today. But it doesn't happen all the time. But I also am here, like Forrest, to congratulate Lysle Ann as well on her retirement and wish her well, even though she had to go out and take care of the crowd. They've got bigger and bigger. I don't know. My baby, our director, may have been lost out there in the crowd. I'm not sure, because she's not used to coming over here. And I don't know where she is. All I know for sure is that she did make a report, because I got it on my computer at home. It was an email. And some of the things on it was, she talked about 600 sun visitors, visitors this last quarter with over 10 foreign countries represented at the Historical Society. And a lot of the things that are happening, as you all know, we have pretty much finished everything except the lighting. The Historical Society is working with the City of Shelton, with their cooperation. And the PUD, the lighting will be finished this month, this coming month. They have two banks in now, I believe, and two other lights. And it's working. And as you well know, it is what's necessary to have a lighting change because of the light coming down on the exhibits. And we do have museum lighting now, or we will have museum lighting along. The other thing is, is I'd like to thank Forrest Cooper for his cooperation in the sign that was put out there on Railroad Avenue. And I believe that they're working on the electrical system at this point to get it lighted as well. Some of the other things, the ongoing history of people coming in. Every day when you walk in there, you find our staff people working and researching on the request of the public. It's, it's almost gotten, I don't want to say out of hand, because I think it's great that all the research is going on. But we do need more volunteers. So if there's anyone in here that would like to volunteer, that we would gladly accept their volunteerism. We have got one new volunteer, Mr. Progriva. He's an old time resident here of the county, retired, and he's working on the computers and, and doing the pictures as it goes on. At this, I will apologize that the director isn't here. I know you will get a written report. And if you want her back, I don't know, something seriously must have happened.
Annette, I have to tell you that it just occurred to me that I talked to Kristen earlier today.
You did?
And she seemed to me that she was asking to be put on the agenda. So we agreed that she would come into the second week of December. So I apologize. She didn't forget. She's not lost. And she'll be here the seventh. It just occurred to me, that's what you were talking about.
I left the house at 11 o'clock this morning. I'll probably have a message on my phone at home.
Well, then we'll get two reports, won't we?
Yes, you will.
I probably steered her in the wrong direction, because we weren't quite on the same page. And so I'll take responsibility for that.
Well, that's fine. Again, I don't, did I take that? I apologize. No, I don't. But I do apologize. Thank you. Cut it short, because I know you want to get out to the.
Yeah, the cake. Thank you very much. All right. Mark, you got something from the Parks Department?
Send bringing you a trap policy to establish guidelines and procedures for content duration and application process for the public message boards that have brought to the previous commission meeting. As you know, the current street banner program that displays public messages will cease on December 31st, 2015. From the partnership from Basin County PUD number three, two electronic message boards will be installed on city property managed cooperation with Community Economic Development Department to notify the public of events and opportunities. There'll be attached policy and application form that's also in your packet. They'll give individuals, groups the opportunity to apply for inclusion on these message boards. The allowable content will include emergency communications, driver alerts, public education, public service announcements, notice of community events and meetings for nonprofit organization, information on city programs, Basin County PD information programs, and other community-based programs that are of general public interest. Staff is also proposing that a nominal fee would be developed within the next fee schedule update, which is typically in July each year, to help fund the maintenance operation of the electronic message boards. That sums up the brief on the policy. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what's going to be today.
Questions, the comments?
It just, it looks familiar to me.
It's good. All right. So it appears that the commission confirms, I have enough information to place this on the public. to place this on the Public Message Board Content Policy on Consent Agenda for December 7th, 2015. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is number two on our new business list. It's an inter-agency agreement, urban forestry grant by Steve Goine.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you may recall, last year we contracted for services from the, uh, Pugis Sound Corps to do some maintenance activities in town. It was March of last year. The focus was some invasive vegetation removal and tree trimming along the pear orchard and future parking lot site. This crew performed other tasks around town, as well as assisted with some of the grafting of the David Shelton pear trees, as that work was timely to getting some grafting done. This would be a similar agreement that we had last year. There's no really monetary exchange, it's simply providing some labor for the city, and in exchange for that, we do provide some reporting to document what work was done and provide a report on how we're going to maintain that work. Our staff time and some coordination is about all it costs, and we get a great deal of benefit from the service. We're recommending this for contract in 2016 as well.
Questions or comments for Mr. Goine?
This was so successful last year, I'm really happy that we're, um, have an opportunity to take advantage of it again this year. I don't see any negative, negative results at all.
Yeah, didn't they clean up some of the cricks, too? It was up the year before, I remember seeing them in there. Yeah, I think I agree with Tracy, it's a great, great program.
And we have been doing some trimming along 13th Street and High Ward and Neill Park that kind of work we have trouble getting to, uh, annual base with our regular staff.
All right, it appears we concur that this is a valuable experience for the City of Shelton, and so we have enough information to place this on the Consent Agenda for December 7th, authorizing the mayor to sign. Good, thank you very much, Mr. Goines. Okay, Mr. Leary, did you have anything from your administration report? Got that? General public comment? We've all popped ourselves to death on this meeting, so I don't see anybody else coming forward. You have something to say, but I think you said it.
Nothing more important than...
You seem to be happy. There's a little smile on your face. Okay. Administration, five touches.
Touches. No touches on the sheet, John.
Our next meeting will be December 7th, 2015, immediately following another Metropolitan Forest District meeting. That's what it says? Okay, so...
It's Thursday, 5:00.
Okay, yeah, 6:00. Yep. It says, this means, Jerry, thank you.